Good?
Yep.
Okay, welcome everyone to our first live broadcast. Or in person, whatever, I guess live, Zoom live. Anyway, welcome back. Our newly decorated office here in furniture. I don't think Jeff pointed out, we haven't had a meeting since everything was brought in. So, all new. That called a meeting to order and it's kind of like the agenda, but it should go quickly. First thing is continued public hearing, Chapter 126. Have we had any more comments or?
No comments received.
We had no comments at the public hearing, no comments after the public hearing.
Okay. So, I will make a motion to close the public hearing, Chapter 126.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Resolution 162021, adopting local law 02-2021, amending Chapter 126. I guess I'll read this one, it's a short one. Filing resolution was, Resolution 16-2021, adopting local law 02, 02021, amending Chapter 126, vehicle and traffic. Filing resolution was May, I was going to go over that one. Whereas the Village of Cole Spring Board of Trustees has caused to be prepared to draft a local law to amend 126 of Village Code, vehicle and traffic. And whereas the Village Cole Spring Board of Trustees held the duly notice public hearing on the draft law on June 22, 2021. And whereas the Village of Cole Spring Board of Trustees continue the public hearing on the draft local law on June 29, 2021. And whereas the Village of Cole Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act as it applies to the adoption of the draft local law. Now therefore be resolved that local law number two of 2000, is that a little messed up there or no?
Yeah.
Of 202021 is hereby adopted and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure, including filing said law, local law within the York State Office of the Secretary of State.
So you want to make a resolution, make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the local law 16-2021.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Yes.
Okay, next is Resolution 172021, setting date and time for a public hearing on local laws 03-2021 and 04-2021. Let's see, resolutions have been, setting a date and time for public hearing on proposed local laws, adding to the code of the Village of Cole Spring, Chapter 73 prohibiting the operations of established establishments that allow onsite cannabis, cannabis, sorry, consumption and Chapter 74 prohibiting the licensing of retail cannabis dispensaries. I'll make a motion to set the date for a public hearing.
Second.
Let's see. Whereas the village board seeks to update the village code by adding Chapter 73 and 74 to the code of the Village of Cole Spring. Whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for public hearing to consider the adoption of Chapter 73 prohibiting the operation of establishments that allow onsite cannabis consumption and Chapter 74 prohibiting the licensing of retail cannabis dispensaries. Now therefore it is hereby resolved with the village board, hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law project in accord with New York State Environmental Quality Review Acts and Part 6617 of the Regulations Implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR. And let it be further resolved that the public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed addition to the Village Code of Chapter 73 prohibiting the operations of establishments that allow onsite cannabis consumption and Chapter 74 prohibiting the licensing of retail cannabis dispensaries. And to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental effect, impacts of the proposed legislation in accordance with SECR. On July 15, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the Cole Spring Firehouse, 154 Main Street, Cole Spring, New York, 10516. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Roll call.
Okay, trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next is Resolution 182021, setting date and time for local laws, amending Chapters 5, Community Choice Aggregation, 9, Code of Ethics, 21, Planning Board, 32, Alarms, 40 Building Construction, 45 Dogs, 47 Return Checks, 57 Reimbursement of Professional Consultants' Expenses, 71 Licensing, 118 Taxation, 127 Residential Parking Program. Let's see, I got a double thing here, or basically cannabis, so, okay. Just went over that, so I'll make a motion to set the date and time for the public hearing for those chapters that I just read.
Second.
The following resolution, okay. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cole Spring seeks to update Village Code of amending Chapters 5, 9, 21, 32, 40, 45, 47, 57, 71, 118, and 127. Whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for public hearing to consider amending the following chapters of the Village Code, 5, Village Code, 5, Community Choice Aggregation, 9, Code of Ethics, 21, Planning Board, 32, Alarms, 40 Building Construction, 45 Dogs, 47 Return Check, 57 Reimbursement of Professional Consultants' Expenses, 71 Licensing, 118 Taxation, and 127 Residential Parking Program. Now therefore it is hereby resolved to the village board, hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law, the project in accordance with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and Part 617 of the Regulations Implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved that the village board thereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR. And let it be further resolved that the public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed amendment through the above listed chapters and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accordance with SECR. On July 14, 2001, at 6:30 PM at Village Hall, 85 Main Street, Cole Spring, New York. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law.
Okay, roll call, trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
And Mayor Morandi.
Aye. Thank you. Sure, Marie, you're incredibly happy to see this.
I am. Do you want to read through the local laws?
On which one?
On the, yeah, the two, one of those ones.
Okay. I did, I was following through there. Okay, stepping back just to the, our last resolution, I just wanted to, just to trust the early suggestion, the laws for the cannabis sale or distribution and consumption. First is local law number three, 2021. Section 11 legislative intent is intent, okay, sorry. This is a local law adopted pursuant to Cannabis Law 131, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within the Village of Cole Spring. There's the intent of the local law to opt the Village of Cole Spring out of hosting retail cannabis dispensaries within its boundaries. Section 2 Authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to Cannabis Law 131, which expressly authorizes cities and villages to opt out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries to locate and operate within their boundaries. Section 3 Local Cannabis Retail Dispensary Opt Out, Board of Trustees, the Village of Cole Spring County of Putnam, hereby opts out of licensing and establishing cannabis retail dispensaries within its boundary. Section 4 Permissive Referendum As For New York State Cannabis Law, Section 131. The local law is subject to permissive referendum in accordance with the Cannabis 131. Serviceability, if a court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of the local law, or the, or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstances is invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of the local law, but shall be confining to its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or in the application to the person, individual, firm, or cooperation of circumstances directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. Section 6 Effective Date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State pursuant to the Cannabis Law 131. This local law is subject to permissive referendum and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of the State until an applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition or a referendum has been conducted approving this local law. The second local law is the, a local law adopted pursuant to Cannabis Law 131, opting out of licensing of onsite cannabis consumption establishment within the Village of Cole Spring. The Section 1 Legislative Intent is intent of this local law to opt the Village of Cole Spring out of hosting onsite cannabis consumption establishment within its boundaries. Section 2 Authority, the local law is adopted pursuant to Cannabis Law 131, which expressly authorizes cities and villages to opt out of allowing onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate and operate within their boundaries. Section 3 Local Cannabis Retail Dispensary and/or Onsite Consumption Opt Out, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cole Spring County of Putnam hereby opts out of licensing and establishing onsite cannabis consumption establishments within its boundary. Section 4 Permissive Referendum As For New York State Cannabis Law, Section 131. This local law is subject to permissive referendum in accordance with Cannabis Law 131. Serviceability, I'm going to skip over serviceability.
It's severability.
What is that?
Severability.
Oh, severability.
That's why you want to skip over.
Thank you.
Very long day.
Yeah. Effective date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with Secretary of State pursuant to Cannabis Law 131. This local law is subject to a permissive referendum and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of State until an applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition or a referendum has been conducted approving this local law.
Jeff, a question on these. So, local law 3 is retail and local law 4 is onsite consumption.
Correct.
If I look at the Resolution 70, Chapter 73 is onsite consumption and 74 is retail. So, are they reversed? Is the local law number 3, it says that it is for retail and local law 4 says it's for onsite. Resolution number 17 says 73 is onsite and 74 is retail. The local law number 3 and local law.
I will fix the local law numbers so it matches the resolution.
Okay, that'd be great.
So the ones are correct that are in the resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you want to read the resolution over.
Is it helpful, Mayor, to explain what happens next?
Yeah, so, yeah. So, just to explain a bit, the board decided that because of probably the complexity or probably the interest in this one, or the lack of knowledge of what it all means, that we would opt out, which is the first step that we had to do in order to do a permissive referendum. So, there was two ways that you could, that you could have a permissive referendum to opt out. One was you could have petitions sent and, you know, the, anyone, any residents could gather petitions and bring them to the board. That was one way to opt out. The other is that the board decided that we would opt out. And we, and this is contingent on a referendum. So, we opt out of, out of the, of the law, so saying that you can establish the dispensaries or consumption. And that's contingent on a referendum, which will be on the, on the ballot this coming November. And at that time, people will have the choice, residents will have the choice to decide whether they want dispensaries, or if they don't, and whether they want consumption, onsite consumption, please. And let the people speak.
So, the next step is the public hearing.
Right.
On July 15, on both onsite consumption and dispensaries. So, the public will have an opportunity to voice their comments and suggestions.
And at that time, we can further dip into the, into the law too.
Yeah.
So, you know, explain before, as, as we, at the start of the public hearing.
Yeah, we were going to put something on the village website to explain the law. And I think that was primarily from either, was it from Nikon?
We have the Nikon piece that they put together. We could put that there. We also had talked about something, I think, from the Department of Health, maybe it put together something that Kathleen had mentioned. As much information, I guess, as we can find that's relevant.
I would think minimally the Nikon, because to me that explained it fairly well. So if we could put that on the website, it's also very accessible, that document.
One thing, if we, if the board didn't opt out and we didn't, and no one gathered petitions or no one understood, they had to gather petitions or whatever, then, then it would be law and you'd be able to have establishments. By opting out, you can opt in at any time, like even if during the referendum, if the, if the public decides they don't want them now, we can opt out later. But if we don't opt out, then we can't change it.
Uh, in later.
That's, yeah.
Yes.
So, I think we decided the best thing is let, let people.
But this is the only opportunity to opt out.
Right.
If we don't do it now, there is no revisiting it next year.
Anything else on that? Sorry, I should have had your comment before we, so, I don't know. This is all new to me.
I don't want to ask what part of this is all new to me. I'm not going to ask that question.
Sitting in a new chair up here.
Oh, that's what it is, yes, yes.
Unfamiliar territory. All in the past, Marie. And this is the rude state officer, Ed Bollinger, effective July 2. So, this is a little bit complicated, not really, I guess, because of Ed's other job, right? At some point, you have to resign from any other, you know, part-time work or other work that you have regarding retirement, right?
It has to do with his retirement, his previous job as a corrections officer. He has to come off all public role for a couple of days as he processes paperwork.
So it's just a, a kind of a ridiculous old process that you go through, we, you know, he resigns for a few days and then we hire him back. Ed is, I don't know whether we should hire him back.
Absolutely.
So, I'll make a motion to restate Ed Bollinger, who is one of our favorite police officers in the village.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, Ed. He was just waiting to hear.
I think he's working now, actually.
Is he working now?
Yes. Yes, his retirement starts at 11:59 tonight. In last room.
He gets to work the holiday weekend looking at.
Okay, next is, Dave Morbello is here from the hub. And there's a request for a 5K race. And Dave, would you like to present?
I sure would, thank you. Now, just to clarify, if Ed gives me a ticket right now.
He's retired.
He's, he's retired.
I don't know the ticket.
I'm sorry, I have, I have three copies here, so, I wanted to share. I have one for Jeff here. Nice to be here for the first meeting back.
Great to have you here.
Sorry, we were a little late. I wasn't sure we would get a seat.
It's always tough.
Henry was taking up a lot of space. So this is basically the same proposal that I came to you guys with 18 months ago. I didn't really change anything because you guys approved it the first time. Of course, you know, I'll be the first to say that times are obviously different now because of COVID. We'd be willing to change everything. I know not everyone here was on the board when I presented the first time, but the Phillips Town Behavioral Health Hub located right down the street, as you know, seeks to be a local access point for mental health and addiction services within Phillips Town. So, you know, we're a charity and most, we have a few grants, but most of our, you know, most of our budget comes from fundraising. And COVID has been a tricky time for charities that rely on fundraising because you can't have events. And also, we're a little different than a lot of the school foundations or other events in that we don't throw parties like the Howland School Foundation because, you know, our mission is to provide resources for people as opposed to, you know, giving them alcohol and trying to get them to raise money. So, we decided that we wanted this to be our signature fundraising event. And that was, you know, in our second year, back 18 months ago. And, you know, then COVID hit and we were, you know, weeks away from having this race. And, you know, wisely, Mayor Morandi asked us to postpone it. So, we had always hoped for it to be a spring event, but that hasn't really worked with our timing. And so now, given that things are opening back up and I'm back in here without a mask and things to be, seem to be returning to normalcy, we would like to float the idea of doing this again. I know they're doing the New York Marathon, the Boston Marathon this year, albeit with limited capacities. And we're certainly willing to, you know, have you guys dictate us what capacity you want us to do this, if you allow us to do it at all. I haven't settled on a hard date here yet because, you know, this is obviously uncharted territory trying to resume an event after COVID. But we were hoping to do it in September or October, specifically because we know it wouldn't be as hot in the summer, it would give us time to plan and sell tickets. And also, traditionally, there's the Turkey Trot, which is in, you know, late or around Thanksgiving. So we don't want to necessarily compete with that. So we would want to at least be, you know, two months to six weeks away from that. And we support that, that event as well. So, the idea here, and it is, like I said, the same thing that I proposed last time, do you guys agree to? But, you know, we have a band playing and speakers and multiple races and we're willing to truncate that this first year based on COVID. But the basic plan would be, you know, to have a, you know, an hour and a half of time in the morning where people can sign up and get their numbers, you know, just to make sure that we don't have a big crowd by having it all at once. We run the 5K. Then, you know, while there's a 5K, you know, we could potentially have a band or not play in the bandstand, it's a bandstand after all, so it'd be nice to take advantage of it. 5K ends, winners announced. Then, if you'll note on the map here, I've shown the 5K route, which I think was actually originally created by your son, who's Mayor Morandi for the Turkey Trot. And we have these three police checkpoints, which last year you asked me to consult with Officer in Charge, Larry Burke, and he recommended those three spots as places where police would help runners cross heavy traffic. That's the two crossing spots on 90, as well as the highway crossing spot on 301 on Main Street and Pearl. So, those are also the spots for the Turkey Trot that they generally have police. And so, the idea would then be a, do a family fun run because, you know, we want this to be a family event, but kids can't necessarily do a 5K. So, we would just do one race for families, you know, parents and kids to do together, and that would be just around the blocks of Lower Main Street there, which I illustrated in blue. So, you know, we're, I also listed the other organizations that we got approval from the first time, and we would go to each of them again. That's the Village of Nelsonville, because a few blocks of this is in Nelsonville. Howland School District, they were happy to participate, wanted, want to get involved. I spoke to the superintendent at my son's moving up ceremony. He was asking if we were planning on doing it. They want to have a little thing there, Howland, when the runners run through to support. Also, obviously, Cole Spring Police, Sheriff's Department, Volunteer Realty Corp, and Fire Department. So, obviously, it starts with you guys, but we'd love to do it. I think we could use the fundraising opportunity. You know, we've been doing pretty well and the community has been supporting us, but we haven't really had an event in 18 months. And like I said, a lot of our budget is fundraising. So it'd be great to be able to do this and, you know, if you guys have any questions.
Do you think it's Saturday or Sunday?
You know, I honestly would try for a Sunday because I think.
I think that would be better.
I think there are more families squirting events on Saturday and there's more organized activities on Saturday.
The one, the one challenge on Sunday is Fair Street, which is blocked northbound traffic, only northbound traffic. And so what we did, if I remember correctly, at the last 5K run, is we had them come down Garden Street and then cross over through the school parking lot and then go down Cross Street.
Through the, through the church parking lot?
Through the church parking lot and then down to, then down Cross Street to Stone Street, then Stone Street to Main Street, to avoid any congestion on Fair Street.
Yeah.
Now, the timing of the church services, first mass is at 8:30.
First mass is at 8:30. The second mass, which used to be in Garrison, but is now at the church, I believe, is 10:15. So you're going to have cars moving around.
I, I actually think Saturday is better and not get involved with the church.
And also you have an option of a rain date. If you do Saturday, you can go to a rain day.
Runners are tough, they can't do it in the morning.
Do the Pershinar's park in that parking lot? I've wondered this for a long time.
They park in the parking lot and on the street.
Were you suggesting that they come on Garden and go through the parking lot?
Yeah.
And then down Cross?
It's still going to be on Fair Street.
They're going to be on Fair, but it's a shorter period of time.
I mean, we could avoid Fair Street altogether by coming down Main Street, but I think that would be more adjusted.
I think you just, we work it around on a Saturday and block us up the road or do it one way like we have.
And that's why I'm here. We'll, we'll make it whatever you guys think will be best and goes.
One thing that I'll throw out there, and I'm probably not seeing the downside of this, is we're having our community day. This is a community event, a community day usually doesn't start till later on. This gets over at 11 o'clock. So, the band, there will be set up on, on the bandstand that day for music and everything else. So maybe there's a way we can meld the two together.
There's Labor Day planned.
Labor Day.
So it's earlier.
What's the date?
September 4.
10 hours for a reason.
I haven't, I, I'm getting a meeting together this week for our first one. We're, I'm way behind in it, but we have everything kind of set. Well, we don't have everything set. We don't know if we're going to have a parade or whatever, but that would be afternoon or something.
What, what time do you think they have done for that?
The parade and stuff, if it started, wouldn't be until, and we kind of work back from the fireworks and I think sundown is 7:30 this year. So, I mean, it's usually, 4th of July is 9 or whatever.
And the two events could, in essence, help to contribute towards each other and strengthen each other.
But also, the downside is you're going to have heat, yeah.
You're going to have what?
Heat, heat. It'll be warmer on September 4 than it is at the end of September or in October, which is a big.
Close them down.
Well, if you, if you did it early, it wouldn't be so bad. I love the idea of combining a community day.
Spray them down with holy water.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, races are early. Yeah, I mean, races are early, especially, you know, in the hot season. They get them going, you know. Well, Marie, I, I remember last time you and I had a challenge of who was going to come in first in the race. I don't know if you remember that, but I'm still counting on that bet.
It's still going to be Marie.
So you, you have to say what time you're comfortable.
I'm not running anymore.
You retired.
I gave up.
You retired in the last year.
I gave up five years ago.
So, it sounds like you guys are open to us having it, in essence.
Absolutely.
Well, that's awesome, thank you. And I don't know if you feel like there would be any need for restrictions, but right now, if you're having community day, it sounds like we're open, for opening things up. And, you know, not having restrictions on the number of runners we have would certainly help our cause to raise more money. But I will say now that, you know, if you guys say that, we won't hold you to it because you never know what's going to happen and things change, you know, obviously.
Will it be a sign up for this or just show up?
No, we will, we, we, last year.
So we'll know how many people are there.
We have our unsign up. But also, you know, we had discussed with, I discussed with Larry that we could. that we could potentially have some walk-up possibility. This was pre-COVID. But that, that we would have an agreed amount based on how many pre, we had signed up already. And that Larry would sign off on how many walk-ups we would even allow if, you know, our numbers were down. So, you know, he wanted to basically, you know, be able to control the capacity of this event, which certainly is reasonable.
Did he have a number in mind for you?
I think last night he said three hundred, but I don't want to, I have it in my notes.
Total?
I believe for the 5K.
Total runners.
Yeah, for the 5K because it would go through town. And also, we did agree that we would, out of the funds raised or possibly by sponsorship, reverse the village for the overtime of the police officers that will be working at the spots. That was a part of the, of the original agreement. So I wanted to make sure I throw that out there. So I, I have to go back to my board, which will have a, a meeting shortly later this month. But I'll tell them that you guys are interested in fact and that you would like to try to pair it on the Community Day, which you said was September four.
Like, was the rain day on the fifth?
With the rain day on the fifth. I, I like the idea that if we could get together sometime, I'm just trying to make that happen.
I think we, yeah, we'll have to, you know, get together for sure on that. So traffic and whatever, if there's three hundred people where they park near where we're going, that's a lot. Quite a few folks.
Yeah.
What's the tentative schedule so far for that community yet? Just so for the next meeting or something like that? Is there one at all?
For the Community Day?
Yeah.
No. Fireworks are after dark.
So far, it's fireworks in the evening.
Typically, there is a parade. And then there's a high baking contest. There's typically a dog thing.
Yeah.
Bicycle decorating contest. And then all of the, the beer truck, the food, booths, those are all down on West Street.
But they usually have a setup, usually Andrew comes down, sets up the, like, nobody's usually there until afternoon.
Yeah.
And usually we don't get started until a little later. Like actually, I think at three o'clock or so, the parade's been, and they've been miserable on Fourth of July. Talk about heat.
Oh, boy.
So anyway, that's what we're hoping for.
So, well, thank you. I appreciate you guys very much considering it. I guess the one thing I'm not a hundred percent sure, the last time we did our event on the weekend at Dockside Park, there was still free parking on the weekend at the train stations. Is that still?
Yeah, the train station's free. And actually, we got an okay from them. Signs might be up actually directing people there.
So we could potentially on our run signup sheet say recommended parking on Saturday.
There'll be fifty place spots there just for us, but you can park in the whole parking lot. It's free. That's good.
Imagine you're going to have a lot of people on foot, too.
I think so. People could come off the train, you know.
If you do, if you do have it on, if we do work, you know, together on this, I think me or Riverfront would reach off the park. I think we're going to need space for people setting up and everything. So that's one downside.
Yeah, we can put a signup, 5K parking, ten of the right.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably just so you know.
Yeah, okay, great. So let me take that to my board. Our meeting's the second Wednesday of the month and we'll get back to me. They'll be very excited to hear that you guys are supporting this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want these back? Can you?
Ah, you can keep them. Did you want, Mike?
Yeah. Okay, next is discussion, or discussing, but a discussion of Hops on Hudson event at St. Mary's. They have three schedules, scheduling three events. Hops on Hudson, July seventeenth, August twenty-first, September twenty-fifth. And basically, it's, well, events thirty to forty artisan, artists, makers, mostly from New York, a couple of food trucks, defined fenced-in beer eating area in the parking lot, background music by some local artists, and the church raffle. Talent, glass workers, jewelers, woodworkers, potters, multimedia painters, fibers, specialty food, beverage, ceramics, and more. The details, between thirty to forty artisans, each occupying ten by ten tent on church lawn. There will be a minimum of ten feet between exhibitors. Any aisles between exhibitors will be a minimum of fifteen feet wide. Any and all exhibition exhibitors, sorry, will be at least ten feet from the sidewalks on Main Street and Chestnut Street. See math. One, two, three, one, two, three food trucks will be positioned in the church parking lot. There will be a fenced-in beer area in the church parking lot where Neo craft beer, hard cider, and wine will be sold by the cup for consumption in fenced-in area only. Live music, one-to-three-piece folk groups will play background music and they will be under a ten-foot by ten-foot tent near the church hall building facing the grand lawn. See location on the map. Parking at the nest is secured for the vendors. Jurelli has provided insurance. Parking for attendees at the high school, Jurelli has provided insurance. Parking for attendees Route Nine, Side Roads High School and Metro North Station. There will be no parking on church property in order to provide safety to visitors and vendors while maintaining fire truck access. There will be a big shop and dine in Coal Spring fundraising raffle for the church. Three bathrooms and a hand cleaning station will be located in the church parking lot. A dumpster will be provided. The existing big tent is the only big tent on the property. Any and all other artisan tents will be ten by ten. The big tent will be used for eating. Tables and chairs will be provided. Social distancing will be maintained. At this point in time, we would like to ask for permission to install some eighteen-inch by twenty-four-inch street signs in the village area, starting as soon as you give us permission. Here are some of the spots. One at the tunnel on the riverside, one at the gazebo, and one at the entrance to Dockside Park. Also install two on the grass between Main Street and Forge Gate entrance. In addition, at the tunnel on the land side, one on each block going up Main, up the street, both sides, and three on Chestnut Street. On the day of the event, we would like to put up Modern Makers Market Today sign with an arrow showing direction to event. You can contact us and should you have any questions, thank you for your prompt attention. As a matter of fact, we look forward to hearing from you. So first thing I, you know, I'm not sure what we can regulate or what we can control. And I've asked our attorney that and haven't got an answer yet. So I don't know if we actually can control anything. It's on private, private property. I think we, if we feel like this, I mean, he seems like he's addressed the vendor parking. And if you can't actually drive onto St. Mary's, I think that's a good thing. Not sure how much more hectic it will be than a regular day on the weekend. That's my initial two cents. The signage seems like way too much to me. If we can discuss that. Other thoughts?
Well, any signs on public property, he would have to get permission from you.
Right, yeah.
To do.
Any other concerns?
I've, I've asked him for how many personnel will be deployed to assist with pedestrian vehicular traffic. And I haven't gotten a response back yet.
That's my biggest concern, is crosswalks and, and traffic flow.
I'm not sure what, what they would be controlling. If you can't go on the party, if you can't go in St. Mary's, then that's going to be traffic on 9D and we definitely don't want anyone but police officers there. And I don't want personnel. Where, where are they directing traffic, I guess?
I've asked him for the locations and the people and qualifications. They have, I haven't gotten a response back yet.
And, and that's something we don't, do not know whether we can actually, we could ask him to do that, but I'm not sure if we can require him to do that.
No, it's just, right now, it's just a question.
Okay.
What it will be, what it would be totally against is putting a sign on each block, both sides of the street going up Main Street.
Just too much?
Yeah, it's way too much. It says three on Chestnut Street. I don't know if he's talking in the, in the public way or on private property.
Didn't he later say that he was, sorry, later say he was withdrawing that, the Chestnut Street part?
It could be, yeah.
In a later, in a later iteration? Sorry to interrupt your.
I'm still trying to get my head around Main Street and Forge Gate entrance. I assume he means Main Street and Long Terrace.
Main Street is every single block. That's a, that's a question.
That's out. Absolutely. I wouldn't.
And you see the sign is.
It's not small.
It's, it's not salt. It's actually twenty-four by eighteen, not eighteen by twenty-four.
Yeah, he wants to put.
That's neither here nor there. And, and the signs are really advertisements for the three dates. They are not directional signs. He did have in his attachment, one of the attachment was a directional sign. And there were two of them going whatever.
They also wouldn't like one at the, at the gazebo, which is actually the bandstand.
Sorry?
He wants to put one at the bandstand. And this flower's around there. That's, that's not the place you put a sign, an advertising sign. It's pretty, it's, you know, this is personal, but I don't think we should put one there. So that's my two cents. And just to make sure, he says he'll have a dumpster, I assume. Whoever puts the dumpster is going to take it out and he doesn't expect us to empty it.
Yes, I would, I would think so, too. It's, it's on private property, not our property.
Any concerns besides the signage?
Well, I, I agree with Kathleen. From a safety point of view in the village, I think we need to have a better understanding of what personnel are, where they're going to be and what skills or certification they have for directing vehicular traffic in particular.
And finding your way to the Haldane, to the parking lot at Haldane, that's what I'm thinking about mostly is for people to know, this is the path you go with your car, and then once you get out of the car, here's how you're walking back.
Well, his, his response to that is that it's going to be on the website, that the location of the parking will be available on your website.
It doesn't help you when you're in the car, though.
Right, I agree.
The only other thing I would say is if we do give permission, we give permission for the July event, not for all three.
Good point.
And we, you know, see how it goes.
Yeah.
Or if there's any problems, then the others, they may not happen.
But aren't they already, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter if, if it doesn't work out. But they're already advertising on this church property for all three dates, right?
Before they have permission. Well, I guess they get permission from the church, so.
See, I, I don't think, I don't think we, they don't need our permission.
Just check for the signs.
They don't need to do anything as far as I can see.
They need our permission.
For the signs, yeah, yeah, absolutely. But that's it. I mean, we can ask them what, you know, they're, that's, that's not going to help anything if they don't. I don't know what that does for us, but I guess knowing that they have something and then saying, no, you can't do that, maybe. I mean, if they have unqualified people, are, who are we going to let control traffic? And what traffic, like I said, are they controlling?
Well, I guess I was thinking about presenting it more as a, how can you assist our, how can you assist our officers on that day with, with moving pedestrians into traffic?
I think, I think that's a discussion that we need to have with Larry.
Right.
Because people assisting our offices may get in the way.
I mean, if you just like, you know, go, go to our imagination a little, it's, it's a weekend. There's a lot of people. There's streams coming down 9D all the time backing up. It was like last year, they could be backed all the way past the nest. And so what difference is it going to be and what are they going to control? I just don't know what we're controlling. You can't go on the property, which is key to me. I mean, besides that, it's like a tourist weekend. And we're asking them to tell us where they're going to park and stuff, which we don't tell visitors on any other weekend.
I guess I was just thinking about primarily getting from the Haldane parking lot back to the site. That people know where to turn, right, to get to the parking lot and then know how to get back across.
But that's not our responsibility, Sean, that's.
If they even go there.
Ways, ways will take them. Ways, walking will give them directions how to get back, so.
Well, we've asked the questions, so we'll see if they return it.
But we do need to respond to the signs.
Right.
So why don't I come back?
Can we, can I look at this a little?
Oh, no. No, I want an answer right now.
Thursday, I'll, I'll, I'll look at where he suggests and get, put my two cents in or whatever I want if they want to. If they want to let me know. I mean, I agree, Main Street shouldn't be, I mean, he's got huge signs on the lawn. You're not going to be able to miss it. I'm sure you need a few maybe, you know, down by, turn it to Long Terrace. Usually people put one there, maybe one along the line.
But, but the signs that he wants to put up are directional signs.
Right, they're just.
Advertisement.
So people up to that date will know there's, I guess.
Right.
All right. So let's look at that. We'll revisit Thursday. Is that okay?
Oh, we can do it Thursday.
We can do it next week.
What's that?
We can do it next week. It'll take a little time.
Okay, thanks.
We don't have a meeting Thursday, anyway.
No, we don't have a meeting Thursday. I thought we did, actually.
Oh, okay. Maybe we should have one.
No, you. I'm just going to just kill like five old days.
Table till next Tuesday's meeting?
Okay, yeah.
So next, that'll be July, right?
So if John contacts you, Jeff, if he can say, you know, we would, you know, like to have more information for our own, you know, put our, put our concerns to rest and then we'll be get back to them on the signs?
Yep.
Thank you. Next discussion is steps for the parking, for parking and short-term rentals.
On parking, the parking committee is expecting to make a presentation of their recommendations to the village board in two weeks.
Okay.
So they're, they're going to be working on, I said two weeks, maybe it's two, maybe it's three weeks. They're going to be working tomorrow night and then the following Wednesday night. And so it would be the Tuesday after that, they would, that they would come back to the village board with a presentation or a set of recommendations. So I would recommend that we wait until we know what they have to say.
And then, and that will, that will coincide with our business meeting, the monthly meeting, right? That's the second.
Who's, who's going to count? I do.
Yeah, July thirteenth.
So they're doing tomorrow night.
Twenty-first, or no, twenty-first.
They're doing tomorrow night and the seventh, so it would be the thirteenth.
Just the second Tuesday.
No, that's, that's.
They're doing, they're doing the thirtieth, the seventh, and then they'll be ready to present. So they can do it on the thirteenth, they can do it on the twentieth.
I would suggest the twentieth.
Or they could do it on the fourteenth.
We can do it.
No, they can't do it on the fourteenth. We have a hold.
And also the fifteenth, so probably the week after is probably.
We have meetings thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
So the twentieth. Yeah.
Okay.
And will that be a, just a, just a presentation or comment as well?
It'll be a presentation with the recommendations and I would assume a question and answer. They would answer any questions that we would have.
But they'll be just to the board, not to the public, right?
Yeah, it would, just as it was the last time. The public has had two opportunities to hear the recommendations, although some people in the public still have questions.
Okay, I, I know a lot of, there've been a number of changes based on input, so.
So can you clarify exactly, so that they're going to do a presentation, us, obviously the public can watch the presentation, but they can't comment?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
So, so far, there's been two public meetings, not a public hearing, so.
Got it.
Okay, short-term rentals?
So at the last meeting on chapter one hundred, we reached a point where I believe all open questions in the chapter have been addressed. So.
This is the board working on the chapter?
Yes, yeah. So now the question is, what does the village board want to do? Do they want to go forward with an enactment of the law as it has been, as it has been modified by the village board? Do they want to have a second public hearing? Or do they want to just end any discussion about short-term rentals with no change to the law? To me, those are three, three options.
I would think it would be wise to do a second, since there have been so many modifications, to do a second public session.
Isn't, isn't the idea, I mean, we've had two public hearings on this, basically.
And we've made some large modifications.
And isn't the idea of a public hearing, basically, that we listen to what the public says and then we take it and we, we, we write as we feel we need to? If we keep going back and presenting every time we, we just address the comments, then we'll never get finished. I think, I think we need to be the people who are going to take, make the final decision.
Sure, I'm wondering if you're wanting to present, however, a, because we have been talking about it on a screen with no one seeing the changes that we're making, do we want to make the revised text? I mean, obviously, you're going to make it available, I would imagine, before the vote? So that people can see the structural changes that have happened?
I don't think we have to, you know.
You don't have to, but would you, would you be interested in doing that as a way to inform the public of the changes that have taken place?
No, not before the vote. No, not before the vote. I think we can do that after the vote, my opinion. I think we should proceed to a vote.
I think we should proceed to a vote. I can go back and forth, we made a lot of changes based on people's...
Yeah, the only open thing, I believe, is when will it actually...
Oh, good point, good point.
Not, it'll become law when we, when we pass it, when we vote on it. But when do we phase it in, or how do we phase it in?
And it's not so much a phasing in, but the current wording says that we begin accepting applications in August. Sorry, sorry, there are two things. We still need a final review by July. And the current code says, just happened to have it here. So the current, the version that we completed work on says, the village will advertise in a paper of record for permitted applications no later than July 15th of each calendar year. So right now we're up against that. Applications will be accepted from August 1st to August 31st.
We can, we may want to write in that for the first year.
The period from September 1st to September 30th. Applications will be verified. The inspections will occur between September 30th and November 30th. And then the permits will be awarded based upon successful inspection. And of course, before you can get into the lottery, you have to have a verified application. So the first checkpoint that we have is July 15th.
Can I ask that point of clarification? Normally when we pass a local law, it is, I believe it goes into effect once it has been received and acknowledged by the Secretary of State. Is that the case here? So what's the timeline for that usually? How long does that take?
From the time the law is voted and passed, we have 20 days to file.
Okay. And then how long does it take for them to...
It could be the next day, I mean, it just, it just depends on their volume, how much they have coming in.
And we don't have...
They're usually pretty quick.
And we don't have to file with Buttonham County?
No. Well, we need to verify with, need to verify with John if we need to resend to planning, Buttonham County Planning, the changes.
I thought he said we didn't, but I mean...
That's what I thought he said too, but I would like to double check that just.
So we can, we can move the July 15th date, in my mind, it's movable. We can move it back to August 1st. If we don't approve tonight, the next opportunity will be next Tuesday and we'll be staring even more closely at the window will be shortened.
But we have not advertised that we're voting this evening, we're saying discussion of next steps.
We closed the public hearing.
Definitely.
So one of the next steps is to approve the law, have another public hearing, or drop it.
Right, I would just think that for transparency, you would want to advertise that you are taking a vote on this issue.
I don't, don't think we have to.
We do need a, we do need a resolution adopting the local law.
Okay.
So we have to vote out tonight?
Correct.
Okay, put it on the, put it on the agenda for next Tuesday and we'll vote.
Can we make a, you know, if we vote next week, we're going to stick with the, with the dates that we have. Is there any way we can write in there that for the first year, we're going to do something different? Or you're just going to leave it as it's been?
John had a problem with that.
Okay.
When we discussed that with him six months ago. I'll ask him again, but he did have a problem with that.
So we're scheduled for next week, a resolution?
Which is the July 6th. And then it goes to the Secretary of State. We hear back from the Secretary of State and whatever they get back to us, and that's when it is enforced. So we're aiming for the 15th, but that's the, it seems like that's the variable, when New York State acknowledges, receives, right? So it could be, it could be the 15th, or it may have to be later. Right?
We could, yeah, we could change that first date from where he says from the 15th to August 1st.
Okay, so maybe we should do that, which then backs up the other dates, is that right?
Yeah.
We changed that, right?
Yeah, just back up the dates.
Okay, so at the next meeting when we vote on this, we'll have the dates there?
Yeah, I'll get you new dates.
And SEGRA, that's been done?
That's been done, done.
Okay. Okay. Finally, before we get to any public comment, we have approval of minutes. Make a motion to accept June 1st.
Is the, the set, the corrections have been?
Yes, these are all corrected.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't there.
Yeah, so it's only three, four people.
And then finally, the board meeting, minutes of June 8th. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor? Put stuff in my... Oh, oh, oh.
You got extra stuff.
Anything else from the board? Then I just have, you know, just some updates. The firehouse, we're going to get a electric heater, it's going to be put in hot water heater, so they'll have hot water. Hopefully that's done this week, it's a short week though, not sure. Waiting for John on signage for MTA. He needs to look at their 30-page agreement and okay that so we can put signs up or order signs and have them up, that's used to MTA lot. And also we can put signs on the streets directing, which we weren't able to do before, and we can put signs down in the parking lot where the Cold Spring section will be.
What possibly gets discussed for 30 pages about directional signs?
Insurance and liabilities, gentrification, and on and on and on and on.
Serviceability?
So that's going on. Working with Murray on the, on getting a garbage RFP out for, to see what the cost would be to privatize or to have a, one of the few garbage companies in the area to take over our garbage routes. We're trying to do that quickly because we need to order a new truck. If we don't do that, which I talked to the, to the person supplying that today, and it looks like it wouldn't be till the end of the year. We would get one and be able to put it on our frame, or put our body on the frame of our old one. So working on that also. I think that that's about it for now. But a lot of things in motion. Hopefully get some of the answers this coming week. That's it for me, nothing else from everyone?
John has come back with the changes to the Park Mobile agreement and those going up to Park Mobile. Lex is going to have his legal team look at it. Hopefully we can get to an agreement and move to him.
Okay. If there's nothing else, public questions?
Who's going first? Well, I guess I'm first then. I would want to make a public comment on the short-term rental policy.
Your name and address, please.
Yes. I'm now the village resident. My name is Dave Marzolo and I live on Langate Road, 189 Langate Road, but also we have business and building on 75 Main Street. So, you know, I thought a lot about the short-term rentals and, you know, my original public comment on the Zoom call was the question of what, what problem are we trying to solve? Because, you know, we have operated an Airbnb at times, obviously everyone knows. We have the yoga studio in town. When the yoga studio closed and we were unable to, for, you know, 16 months, have yoga, we were able to, luckily my wife acquired Bosco Bell to be able to give people the opportunity to still do yoga. But, you know, that was a residential at one point and it still has a lot of residential opportunities. So we did some Airbnb-ing up there just so that, you know, we wouldn't be underwater with the inability to do any of the things that we were doing in our business. But, you know, when I really read the entire proposal, what I had a hard time with were some of the reasons. And I do recognize, you know, I care a lot about this community and the community atmosphere. The small-town nature is why I'm here. I loved growing up here and I love that my kids are growing up here. And if it was, you know, like Venice where everything is just a place for people to come and rent and leave, I see the detriment in that. And I see the detriment of full houses in residential neighborhoods becoming party houses. You know, that is a real issue and the loss of residents, I recognize that. But at the same time, I do feel like a lot of the reasons given, to me, didn't fully make sense. And just to name a few, I know that you guys, or, you know, not to lay any specific claws on anyone, but there was garbage that Airbnb's, you know, contribute to greater garbage. But in a residence, in a residential situation, somebody's living there for 365 days. In an Airbnb, you'd be happy if you had your place filled every weekend. That would be 210 days of somebody living there. If you were filled every weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, less than half of the time, you'd have someone in there creating garbage. But I don't feel like that is justification for, for, you know, to enact this law. And then another one was traffic. And we have found in our, I personally don't think that it would be very easy to live in Cold Spring if you didn't have a car. Everyone who lives in the village, you can get around on the train station for, you know, to limited places, but everyone who lives in the village has a car. But if you're Airbnb-ing, a lot of people come off the train, especially in the village. We have, we have, most of our people that have come, have actually come off the train. So I feel like, you know, to make a law that could have, you know, such far-reaching impacts on certain people's lives, I feel like based on some things that I don't even necessarily know 100% true, to me seems like a bit of an overreach. Now, you know, I support all you guys and I'm happy with, you know, a lot of what you guys have done on the board. I know Tweaker knew on the board, but, you know, I've been before you guys time and time again. I appreciate everything you do. But I feel like Airbnb is a situation that has a lot of different examples of Airbnb use. It's not sort of a one-size-fits-all. Somebody could put their house up as a party house and potentially destroy a residential neighborhood. And I do recognize that's a problem, but there are a lot of smaller ways. Like I know my friend Phil Heffernan does an Airbnb where it's just a unit, you know, and I feel like he relies on that, so...
I think it's three units, thirty...
Three units, sorry. So, correction. We have, we have one unit and we have, you know, our store and our business, and we have one unit that we want Airbnb. And, you know, at the public hearing, our neighbor said that she didn't even know we were doing it. So I feel like there are examples that could be permitted and there are certainly problems that need to be addressed. So, you know, I don't fault the board at all for wanting to address this situation. But I feel like, you know, there's a very wide scope of what people are doing and it doesn't seem like it all is a problem. I feel like it's, it's specific things like the noise, like the party house, or like the loss of full residential houses in communities. And I could see why someone would want to buy a house and make it be just an Airbnb 365 days a year. And I feel like there could be a much more specific regulations and laws that address those specific issues. This is widely overarching and I feel like, you know, there are plenty of rental situations where people could potentially need the money and it's not, you know, a loss of residents because it's just a unit in a building or a unit in a house where, you know, there are still contributing people to the community. It just feels to me like, like this is, is taking a few small problems and coming up with an overarching solution that will actually hurt a lot of different people that are making, you know, that are relying on these Airbnbs just, you know, while managing them and keeping control of them and making sure that they're not problems. So I just feel like, you know, given the light of all that and everything we've been to and also the nature of Zoom, that there should be another public hearing because you guys have made changes and the community came together, you guys reacted. And I think it's fair to give the community one more chance in person, now that we're actually here and not on the computer screen, to let different people come in and say what they think. And you guys are going to vote, how you're going to vote. And I feel like, you know, maybe no more changes will be made, but I think that the community does deserve a chance one more time in person to come down here without a mask on in the town hall and say what they think before you guys make your final vote. So that's my part.
Just personally, from my point of view, this is my opinion. The garbage thing is, can be go either way and traffic. I don't think that it's a given that, you know, people are coming off the train and maybe they are. And so that's not, I don't think was one of our greatest concern. I think our greatest concern is the proliferation of them. I think it's reading, you know, this is not unique to Cold Spring. It's, we've gone through, I've gone through hundreds of these laws that are in all the other neighborhoods. And I think it's the fear of proliferation and the fear of people buying places just to rent them out that's happening. And it definitely takes, you know, takes residential, you know, possibilities off of the market. There's also the, you know, the fact that raising or the amounts of money that you can get for renting, renting short-term rentals kind of escalates the cost of actual renting for people who want to rent full-time because the amount of money that you can make, you know, per, you know, per day. I think this was brought up in the Duchess County report that they did. So I think those were a number of them. I think we addressed and made changes to a lot of what people said and the way that we, and you mentioned there's different people doing things different ways. I think we addressed a lot of those and have changed a number of things. As far as having another public hearing, I don't think it's needed. I think all the points were made. I, I'm aware of all the points that were made, you know, because I think they were loud and clear from the people on Zoom. I don't need to hear them again. And I think they were also brought up in past, you know, in other municipal laws or looking at other reports and other, you know, other documentation on, you know, when people were trying to, you know, implement, you know, laws like we are. So, you know, those are just my feelings. I think as far as the garbage or whatever, I think that's in there because of possibilities or that's it. I don't have it in front of me right now. But we have made changes and we have heard people. And I think our main concern is the number of them and being surrounded by them, which is possible, like I am right now. And sometimes it's, it's, you know, I have two, one on the other side. The other night it's 11 or 12 at night and people are pulling in and shutting their doors and unloading and whatever. And whatever, that's just one example. I mean, but besides that, they're quiet or whatever, I, you know, it's fine with me. You could have noisy neighbors that are full-time. But I think the fact is that we're trying to prevent clusters of these in any one area is one thing we tried to address and the number of them in the village, you know, because I think in something, anything over a certain percentage, I think it just does take away from, you know, the neighborhood feeling. And so I think that's just my feeling on it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't look too far on the garbage issue or the traffic. I think that could go either way. You could have neighbors that are driving, whatever, it could be worse. And you could have them with more garbage. And there are other benefits to, I use Airbnbs, I'm not against them. And when we're doing this law, we were trying to take in effect, take into account all the people that we know that do have them and how to make it work and what the benefits could be for them and for the village. But that's just my two cents on what we went through and how we came up with everything we did and the changes we're making.
Can I ask a question about something that you brought up about having access to the changes that were made then? Is, is that still not possible to just, to share how responsive the board has been to the questions and issues that people have had in the... to the questions and issues that people have had in the changes that were made? I guess what I'm saying is like, can we share?
Like I think some of the stuff that Dave's actually bringing up, I think some of those things we've addressed that they may not know about.
Right, so isn't there some?
I think, you know, just my take on that and I have no problem making it available. But we had open meetings, granted they weren't looking at our document, but they wouldn't look at our document here either. They heard the discussion back and forth, whoever happened to be on the Zoom meeting. And I, some people can make Zoom meetings and some people can't. So, so everything that we addressed, we addressed on a Zoom meeting. So it was a public comment and there were public meetings.
Sure, sure. No, I'm not, that's not the part that I'm questioning. I'm wondering if it's possible then, since, if the feeling is that we've done that piece of the work, why not share all the ways we have addressed people's concerns so that they know that we've addressed their concerns?
Would maybe we would definitely.
I'm not sure what format you're talking about.
Well, I think you, I think what you're saying, we could put it in on our website or the final document before we vote on it. Not that that will change anything, but what you will see is that people can see the changes we made.
Put it there tomorrow.
Sure, that's, I think that would be helpful. That might answer a lot of questions that people have. Or concern, I mean, we don't know, right? So better to have that information out for them to.
To say you guys did an amazing job, I'm in.
So we'll put that on there and the only thing that'll change will probably, could be the date.
Yeah.
Okay, so I appreciate that, Dave. Malia Marzolo, also, Lane Gate Road, mostly Seventy-Five Main Street, I will say that. I spend equal parts at both places. That's what happens when you're a business owner. Dave, I completely appreciate that. I, and I understand you're in a different place and your reality is different than our reality as yours is as everyone in this room. And if I was in a neighborhood, I don't know what that feels like. I don't know what it feels like to be in a neighborhood and look at two neighbors that are now Airbnb's. I don't know what that's like. And I appreciate it. And I understand and totally agree with having law that helps protect our village in that way, specifically with people buying properties for Airbnb, for properties. To address specifically, because I'm not going to try to convince you of a million different things that you've already heard, specifically the numbers that you worked for units. Because you had talked about a certain amount of units and parcels. So for instance, our building is that a unit, a full parcel? And how are you basing those percentages? By the square footage that is actually being rented? Or by, here's a parcel and now this is part of that percentage that you're allotting?
It's based on tax parcel. I believe that was part of what was put out on the village website.
So people aren't renting entire places, so that number would then change. So if you're not renting Airbnb-ing an entire parcel, the percentage number that you all came up with that was allowable would change.
The percentage number was based on the number of tax parcels in the R1 and R3 district. R1, R1 and R3 districts. And that doesn't change, that's sort of cast in concrete, the number of tax parcels.
So, so I think that that number is a very low number allowable for Airbnb's. Especially considering that there's only some, many are people's homes that are renting certain portions of it. I think that can be looked at again as you're refining everything in the coming weeks. And I guess I have, I have a few questions too. One, I'm wondering how long this has been on the agenda? It's really something that I just keep thinking about. How long has short-term rentals law been working on?
The first public meeting on short-term rentals was in September of 2019.
Correct.
So coming on to two years now.
And the parking committee, I'm sorry, is Thursday? Is that what you said or next Thursday?
There's a meeting tomorrow, but that's not the twentieth, right?
The twentieth is the final, yeah. The parking committee presenting to us on the twentieth, July twenty.
And there's no committee for short-term rentals, correct, as you all?
Yeah.
So there's no other people working on this? And no more public comments?
Sorry, that's not true.
Okay.
Short-term rentals was a portion of the code update, which was, the code update committee was formed by the village board in October of 2014. Yes, October of 2014 was one of the twenty-nine topics which the village of Cold Spring was told had to be addressed before the LWRP could be adopted. And so the village board formed the code update committee in October of 2015. Short-term rentals was one of the topics for the code update committee. So the code update committee worked on that topic and presented that topic. I can't remember whether or not it was in public meeting number one or public meeting number two. But there was a public meeting conducted by the code update committee. It was noticed, the meeting was held at the firehouse. And then, so that was part of the public record going back to 2014. There was the public meeting in September of 2019. And then what happened was the code update committee turned their work over to the village board. I think it was in December of 2019. So the village board took up the topic of the twenty, took up the twenty-nine topics and continued working on those twenty-nine topics for the past year and a half now.
And out of those twenty-nine topics, is this, how many of those are gonna be going into law before? Which is, for me, for this, it feels so.
I guess to answer your question, which.
Very, very vigorous and I'm wondering why.
I think what you, I think to cut to the chase kind of on this is.
No, I'd really like to actually know, you know, have these questions.
I think the answer is that the code update, as Marie said, has been working on this since she knows the dates. We have, we have, we have a grant to do this. We have dates that we, you know, have to have this completed by. This is the entire code, which we're working on right now. And that's been pushed back and pushed back until now. I think we finally have to do this and that's one of the reasons why this is being part of, we took this piece out to move this ahead a little quicker. But we have to address all of the chapters, or not all of them, most of the chapters in our code. And that's what we're doing and have been working on for a long time. And so, you know, basically, you know, this, tonight we have the, we have second, first set of.
Eleven chapters.
And there's several codes that we're gonna be doing there that are less controversial or whatever. So we move those ahead, then we'll go to the next set, which are gonna be, you know, probably more controversial or have more opinion on it. And we're trying to get this all done in the timeframe that we're working with.
Which is when?
We're supposed to have everything completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So, so parking included?
Yes, yes, indeed. And in fact, we had a public, as you heard today, we had a public hearing on chapter one twenty-six last week. We approved the changes to chapter one twenty-six this week. There are more changes to chapter twenty-seven, one twenty-six coming along. The parking committee is going to be making a recommendation about chapter one twenty-seven, which is one of the eleven that we will be having in the public hearing on July fourteenth. So, yes, parking is part of that.
And the members of the original board that you said, that were working on this? The members of the original board that were working on this?
The numbers or the?
Members.
The members. Oh, Jack Goldstein, Mike Armstrong, Barney Malloy, myself, Carolyn Bashan, Donald McDonald.
Henderson, Henderson, which one? Paul? I don't think it was the first.
Oh, that's from the original?
No, not in the original. They were the chairs of all of the standing boards in the village. I think Al was on it.
Carolyn sat for Al.
Carolyn did for Al. So there were about, let me say, eight or nine people that began in October of 2014.
Thank you for all of that information. And I guess lastly, just leading back just personally to our situation, parking is a huge issue as we all know that. I feel very strongly like we have, you know, we've thought a lot about that. My business is impacted by parking in an incredible way because I have to fill a room with actual human bodies. It's not, you know, just picking up an item and buying it or selling it in some other way. It's actually showing up with people and I have to fill that room to pay the mortgage, to pay the taxes, to do that. And they park. And now that doesn't happen. Now we have, you know, a couple coming off the train and we don't have twenty people driving in to find a parking space for yoga class. So when you are thinking about that and thinking about impact specifically with our building, we have brought down parking impact in our area. So it is something to consider when we have those projections listed in the ideas for law.
So the law that we are proposing for Main Street is not to change any of the parking on Main Street from Monday through Friday. It currently stays as it is. On weekends, we would propose a parking, metering of parking from ten AM to five PM. So that would be Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Those would be the days on which your, your clients would be, those are the hours and the days when your clients would be potentially impacted.
That, that's not what I was. Thank you, I appreciate that information, but it was relating to short-term rental. That shift in space to now a very limited groups or limited workshops, which is the way that we're running our business now, is that we have very specific workshops instead of having open group classes where there's twenty classes a week and people come into the village, you know, fifteen to twenty cars at a time to attend those classes. Those are now at Bosque Bell with parking. So I'm talking about the projections in, in the crafting of these new laws about potential impact. And our impact has taken down quite a lot of traffic in that area. So it's something to consider that there are positives, lots of positives. And quite frankly, to, to, to us, that was it for us. You know, we didn't, I didn't get to open my business and you don't know that that's gonna happen. And then the other projections that you're okay now, right? You're allowed to be open now, doesn't really, that's not true. Takes a really long time to get back. And anybody who's on their own business knows how much that is, right? How much that is. It's really, really intense and we're still beating ourselves out of it. And if we didn't have that Airbnb income, we would have been toast, period. I would have had to shut down my business and let go of my twenty employees. It's a big deal.
You pretty much permanently converted your yoga studio to a short-term rental.
Well, no, I use it for, for, for specific workshops from, from people that are coming off the train. New York City yogis for certain weeks.
The current code requires that if you handle a short-term rental, you need to have a permit. And you need to ask about the current code, nothing that we've written, nothing that we've changed.
I know, I heard.
Yeah, you know, but you.
I heard Aaron in the space and I, and I, on our meeting.
And also the other thing, just on Main Street, because it's definitely different, it's the business district, is there's, there's places like Pig Hill that are right next door that have gone to, you know, have to jump through all of the state mandated hoops. So one of our considerations, well, how is that fair to them? Or how is that fair to Jimmy who opened up his hotel? It has to pay taxes, it has to have approvals. And then, then other places on Main Street just can open up one or two short-term rentals and it's the same thing, basically.
It's not the same thing.
What's the difference?
There's tons of differences between opening a hotel or a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental.
Well, Jimmy's is basically a short-term rental in hotel fashion. I mean, it's not, it doesn't have a lobby, it doesn't have people bringing luggage or whatever.
And I mean, our case is a different case and everybody is gonna be a different case. I don't, I mean, that's not, I don't want to do short, you know, Airbnb all of the time. Like I said, I'd like to reserve the space so we can have specialty workshops or things like that. But, but it, it was really important to, to saving us. And, you know, it's easier to do this from a screen and just completely not understand or try to understand that and just get, you know, get buried in the lawmaking. But, but that's the truth. And Fran, so how would I, how would I have, have done that then?
I know how to find Jeff. You walk in, you walk in and say, Jeff, do I need a permit to do this? Jeff's the person that you go to and you guys don't know how to get to him, you know who he is. So, you know, if you knew you needed a permit to do a short-term rental, you'd talk to Jeff about what the procedure is and the logic.
Well, no, I didn't, but, but, but now I do and.
That's why we have a village clerk and it's a small village and everybody sort of, you know, knows. And just, I'm gonna say this, this is going back a little bit to what, to what Dave said. You live on Lane Gate Road, so you have no concept, and I think you were, you sort of alluded to this, you have no concept of a small streets, small congested streets with Airbnb people or people changing every weekend. Like if my neighbors on both sides were different every weekend, yeah, that's a problem. You don't have that on Main Gate, you live in big areas where you don't have close neighbors that you don't know who the neighbors are. So as we're talking about short-term rentals and making regulations for that, that's part of the issue. It's like, these streets are small and congested and, you know. I know who my neighbor is until I don't, until somebody else is walking in the house and then the following weekend, somebody else is walking in the house. And so controlling that, you know, is part of the issue of what we're trying to deal with, you know?
Is controlling strange people?
Yes, strangers in a congested area when you don't know. I mean, and this is what I've heard from local residents. We don't know who, you know, seniors, not so seniors, you know, we don't know who's walking in and out of homes next to us and who's walking down our street from weekend to weekend. That's an issue.
I mean, I certainly don't announce all the people that are coming to visit my house with any neighbors or all the people that are coming to my yoga studio for classes. And I have to say that it has been a great pleasure of mine to offer this beautiful space to other people that are outside of this village and that want to experience that. And it's been wonderful and our neighbor was not impacted in any way.
It's different to have visitors. I have visitors, I have a huge family. It's different to have visitors than to have strangers walking in and out of a house on a weekend or something. And that, that's just part of the things we thought, we thought about as we tried to make a determination on this law. Pass it back, Dave.
I think the impact and I don't think anyone's arguing.
So less cars on my corner, for sure, less people in and out. We make our own rules, very specific rules. Only allowed like a very small, no more than four people. I mean, all of these can be addressed by law that's already there.
And I think we should really see the law. I think that's, I think we totally with Tweaks and Catherine brought up earlier. I think we should put it out there. I don't think it's gonna change and I think we have a solid law now. But that's one of the issues was the number of people you could have in it. We've changed that, we've changed the, we've changed how many people hosted and unhosted. We've addressed that somewhat and.
Not, but not address like, hey, there's people going through a pandemic. I don't understand what it's like for Dave, right? I don't understand. And Fran, I don't think you understand what it was like for me during this pandemic. Just like, I don't understand what it's like for you.
Pandemic is a one-time thing, we're not gonna wait and blow up.
Yes, but the ripple is for a very, very long time. And the fact that this is being so rushed right now.
This is not being rushed, I'll stop you there. This is not being rushed. This has been hours and hours of agonizing hours and I cannot tell you how much time has gone into this, how much consideration is going into everything that you've brought up and the deliberation on it between the board members and my research and everyone's research on this. So this has not been rushed. People have alluded to that, that it's been rushed and why are we doing that now in this? This is because we were doing this during the code update, this has been being worked on. The proliferation of SDRs is incredible. It's being addressed everywhere from New York City to every large city in the country to small villages just like ours. Everyone is dealing with that. One of the things is that now places like yours will now become commercial where you're, where basically your livelihood is based on, on income from a building. So if my neighbor is in a residential area next to me and now the one to the right of me who has a driveway right next to me, right below me, and I'm not basing this on just my, I mean, part of my, obviously everything is part of what we think in our perception, but so, so my initial thing is like, I have a car and I have people that can come in three, four, five times a week, they can pull right next to me, right below my window, they can unpack and slam their doors up and down. This is during workdays when I got to get up and drag my sorry butt to work at seven o'clock in the morning or whatever. And, and, and so this wouldn't happen usually with neighbors that are there full-time or resident. They're not pulling it at 11 o'clock every night. They don't have plates from all over the country. During the pandemic, people were coming next door to me and I have no idea who they are. They have plates all over. That was going on. We have no restrictions right now besides you're not supposed to do it and that kind of, that's just another topic whatsoever, which we're not even dealing with. But what we're trying to do is actually put some controls on what we have in the village with taking everything into consideration. But people can't say that now their livelihood is based on their short-term rentals because then it's a commercial enterprise to me. And that's different than, you know, the, the woman that's retired or, you know, that doesn't have any extra money, that needs to bring someone in for the weekend. And, you know, and some of the stories we've heard, I'm not, not, you know, we've heard that, you know, that we need the extra income or this helps us get by. And in some cases it's true. Other cases, I think it's a matter of keeping up with a standard of living that people have. And so we need like, you know, we want to rent out two, two apartments and that's happening. And it's like, and I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's what a residential area is about or else it wouldn't be called residential, it would be called commercial, it would be a business.
Our building is a commercial building, so.
What's that?
Our building is a commercial building.
Right.
And so regulations for the B1.
And you can easily get.
It's actually, it's actually residential, commercial because when we, when we switched it over, there was portions of the building that were.
It's business, but you can act as, it can be residential.
And it, and it always was. And so we changed that upper and had to go through all the coding. So that was heated.
I think, look at the, what we've done to the, done to the finalize from everyone's input before and see what you think about it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I've listened to every single meeting and I still feel like it's a lot and it's causing, it will cause other problems rather than solving the, the, the main problems that I've heard of. And then the one house on Mountain Avenue, and maybe there have been a lot of other problems, but that was the only one that I heard on any of the calls. And it was incredible that she came on and said, and she hadn't even rented it for over two years and then came on and said, I'm sorry for being a bad neighbor. To me, that's, that's village life. Like, hey, I'm sorry, I'm going to correct my behavior. And, and that opportunity happened and that, and that happened. And, you know, sharing, sharing my story, I, I don't feel like it should make anybody feel angry, you know, like we've all gone through something and it feels terrible to me that it feels this way.
I, I think if I'm angry, it's because the situation has been that we're rushing this and haven't put anything into it or that we haven't looked at.
No.
Or put ourselves into the position that you're in or my neighbors are in or anyone else, and that's just not true. And when you put tons and tons and tons of work into something, as you well know, and then you.
Yes.
And then people say that you haven't or allude to that, that's, that's not easy to swallow, I'll tell you. That's, that's the only anger part of me. I mean, I think there's going to be, and we knew there would be pushback on, on, on people that have properties. And yeah, it might affect some, but I think it's for the betterment of the whole village. And I think that's what you do whenever you're creating laws. It's not we're creating laws to punish people or do something. We're trying to actually make some laws that everyone can, so that there's flexibility in this. We're not trying to outlaw them, which we easily could and there would be no question in that. I mean, people would not be happy, that's for sure. And that's not what we're looking for. So we've tried to address all the issues. We tried to be as flexible as we can on this.
I have one question. I just have one question.
Can I make, can I make this clear? John Lane, Five Mountain Avenue, I'm a resident here in the village.
I'm sorry, what's her name again?
John Lane, L A N E, Five Mountain Avenue, I'm a resident in the village. You know, I'll keep, I'll try to stay brief here. The thing I find curious here is firstly, why you wouldn't even want to, in all abundance of candor, publish this modified law for everyone to see. Very good point, trustee Phillips Woods on that. I find it kind of highly alarming that you guys would not do that in the first place.
First, if I just.
Hold on, don't cut me off, I'll finish my statement.
I think that you can take the, since I'm moderating this, I think I have that, that's part of, part of my little tiny role as well.
Okay.
I just like, I think that, I don't think Marie understood that, what, what Tweaks had brought up. And I don't think she objected to it once it was brought up.
But it wasn't.
So I don't think you have to feel like it was strange.
But it wasn't being done in the first place and I thought the reaction from most of the board members was, well, we don't really have to do that because, you know, we don't have to do that, which I find strange. And then it kind of closed parcel, part and parcel with a number of things I've heard, not just at this meeting, but in other meetings. And so all, all, all I really like to say is, in my view, with respect to this code that's now coming out, there's really only been one public hearing and that was the hearing done this year. The 2019 hearing was a completely different animal and so much has changed since then. And with respect to the pandemic and with, I think, one comment that you fairly said, but I think is misguided, which is people not being able to rely on this business model, okay, as a, call it what you will, way of life, a way of support. Many people's lives have changed permanently over the last year, ours included, mine included, many others, so that we can't really go back. I, you know, I'll speak personally. I've commuted 15 years into Manhattan. I can't do that anymore because of health reasons, okay? And so I, I find that somewhat offensive, that that assumption is being made. Secondly, I think some of the changes or modifications that were not made, particularly the 60-day cap, is really unnecessary. From what I've heard, it's based on personal opinion, speculation, and when you look at the data, there's been no survey done that I know of. And when you look at the data about the operation of short-term rentals, it was backed up in many places that I've seen, the average per night short-term rental in a residential property is between 100 and 190 nights per year or thereabouts. And so to me, cutting it off and saying you can only make this much amount of money per year is really arbitrary and I think it's legally perilous for this board to do. And so there are other reasons and I think that ties in with the penalties and the fines as being, and I think you should consider this very seriously. So I believe there should be a publication of this modified code. There should be an opportunity to comment. And you've said that you're trying to get this done by December 31st. I don't see any particular reason why these dates in August during the summer need to be implemented now, when I think there is a lot of things that can be changed. The other thing is I do believe that there should have been more corroborative collaborative effort with groups within the village to work on this code proactively. And I, I think there's a lot of data out there and a lot of examples of other town and village codes where that has happened for the betterment of everyone. And you've seen what I've said in writing, I'm not going to repeat it, but I think that that's what we were trying to do and it felt like a cry in the dark because we weren't able to do that. And I'll, I'll make this one last point and I don't mean it to be at all offensive, it's a reality, okay? Governmental bodies change all the time. This governmental body, the majority of it, is going to change in just a matter of a few months, okay? There will be a new body in place, which I believe will, will have the opportunity to re-review or re-review this code. So why push it through now? Why not finish your work, leave it for the next governmental body? There will be a new mayor and there will be a new majority of this village board of trustees in November to let them complete the task. That is, that is where I think you should go. I think there should be a motion to table further work on this code. And there should be a discussion among the board as to why or why not that should be. And I believe that's the, the procedure that should happen. And the, the fact of the matter is there will be at least three new people on this board in just a few months. And that's about all I have to say.
Just, just one thing, one, that, that's not going to happen. Sorry, Marie, but I, I just have to address something.
Go ahead.
First of all, the initial letters that you send are, are subtly, obviously threatening as you have tonight with parables, which, which isn't really, you know, trying to embrace or, or work with us.
Not a threat.
Yeah. I could read your emails and they're a threat. There's, there's always a threat of legal action in every one of your comments. Two, just, I'm not going to drop everything that we've worked on because you don't or a number of residents, a minority, are, are, don't approve of what we're doing. I'm not just going to say, okay, let's stop everything. I'm not going to work on garbage, I'm not going to work on hiring, I'm not going to work on anything because we're going to have a new board. We have two new members that worked on this short-term rental with us that are, that are going to be on that board. One may be the mayor. And so I'm not sure why, why, or government wouldn't work if you're going to wait every two years because, you know, a lot of, like my position is two years. To just say, well, someone else is going to, you know, take over in two years, why do you, I don't know, government would just come to a stance of let's not do anything. So that's, that's not actually going to happen. We have five people here that I totally trust and they're, and they're diverse and we have different opinions and although we've, and we've gotten together well, and a few bumps, but I, I think we, when we're working on the short-term rentals, we were working on it for absolutely the best outcome. And that's not going to change. And I, you know, just, just saying that, it's, it's like, we're not going to, we're not going to stop the process we're in. Marie's worked on this, not short-term rentals, but the code for decades probably. And, and we're now at a point where we have to get it done and we want to get it done and it, and it'll be, it'll be for the benefit of the, the entire village once our code has been totally revamped, it's been long overdue. And so, you know, we're definitely not just going to stop everything. Also, I, I don't, I, you know, things do change. Things change all the time, but I don't know how, how a village can be flexible to each, to each individual, you know, need because somebody could want to put, I don't know, something else in that area and say, I can't survive without me putting this in that area or whatever. And so, so to get to, to the point where it's like, okay, first of all, they weren't legal, nothing was done about that. Now people have, have now rented and now some have become dependent on it or some of it's added income, some of it is, is income that's needed to, to make ends meet. But, you know, to go through every individual instance and to try to, try to draft a law that actually meets everyone's needs is impossible. And, and change is inevitable and, you know, I, I, I just don't think because something is the way it is now moving forward, that everyone should be able to do whatever they want because, you know, I need that, you know?
We're not saying that.
Nobody's saying that.
Nobody's saying that and.
Not even close to that.
That, my, my reaction to that, Mayor, is then why not publish the new modified code and allow for one final public hearing? There's really only been one hearing on the code. All right. The, the, the September 29th, 19th hearing was not on the code. There was no changed code. I, I also want to say, I don't think it's a valid argument legally, practically, or, you know, at all culturally valid to say because we had this antiquated obsolete law in the books for many, many years that most people observed in the breach of that you should feel yourself lucky that you should, you're, you're conducting an STR anymore. That would, I can tell you right now, that would not hold up in law. You could try it if you want, but it won't. And as to me being threatening legally, this is a law, okay? I'm sorry. It is a law that is mandating disclosure of people's private information, confidential information, which if they don't cough up, where you want to know, how many days have you rented your place? And if you don't cough that up, you are, you are subject to penalties, okay? I'm sorry if anything I wrote offended you. I will say that what I wrote was backed by a number of non-lawyers in our group who said, yes, you are validly stating our position, okay? And, and you say a minority of people, it's felt throughout that whatever we say is going to be considered to be kind of a scant from what the real community thinks. There's been no survey done. And when people say, we don't want strangers in our neighborhoods, that is highly offensive. This is a village in New York State. We should welcome people coming, other New Yorkers coming here and staying in all these houses, these wonderful houses and allowing these people to make some money to upkeep their houses. That's, you know, strangers in your resident, in your neighborhood, I find that very odd to be hearing from a village board. We don't, this isn't Brigadoom, this isn't, you know, this isn't Glock of War where we can say, okay, let's open Code Spring to a few people when we want to, all right? That's, you know, that's, that's what I feel. And, and again, I, I will say, what I have written, every word I will stand behind, but there are a number of people who stood behind those words. They were vetted by a number of people and approved. And that's all I'll say.
I did just, sorry, Marie, but saying that you don't want strangers and that we don't want people moving into our neighborhoods or whatever are too, that's going to an extreme and that's not what we're saying at all. I have people next door to me that can come in three or four times a week, different people, I don't know who they are, whatever, and that takes away from the neighbor feeling. And yes, it makes you a little insecure. Maybe you're secure with your, where you are and maybe they don't have numbers around you or houses around you. Our, our problem is not, and issue we're not, we're trying to solve is not that we don't like strangers or that, you know, that SDRs aren't valuable to a community and, or else we just outlaw them. What we're trying to do is control them. I, I respect your opinion, that's, I'm, I'm sure that there are a number of lawyers that will have counteropinion to that and I'm sure there's probably already been, been suits that have addressed some of the issues you have. And we'll have to deal with that when we come to it. And, you know, you sending something with six people, you know, or three couples individually written, so it's six people or eight and saying that that, you know, has a, a lot of substance is a bit different.
So that, that, that is offensive, like if you don't, that doesn't matter?
Yes, it matters totally and I said that before.
Like it matters to me, your experience on your road.
Right. And it matters to me what's happening with you on your place. And it matters to me what everyone has brought up during these meetings and we've tried to address these and we'll, and we'll put the, the new law out there for you to see how we've addressed it. We haven't ignored anybody's requests and we've changed a lot of, we have changed a lot in the law that was there originally. We're not going to keep having public hearings and changing the law.
But originally, but the point is originally it was a tone already for, for what we're addressing and it, and it could cause other problems rather than apply a law and then see how that works. Like let's see how it actually settles into the community rather than making a code that is so extensive and a lot of projection.
And expensive to implement.
A lot of projection.
Difficult to implement.
It's not going to be difficult to implement and it's not going to be.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see.
The way the code was written, yes, the next board can do some changes to it and what after that could do some, it's a law. And the same way we're changing our code now because it's outdated and because we need to, the next board can have at it. You know, if after a year or so or two years it's horrible, anybody can, any board can make adjustments so it's not.
I am, I understand that, Fran, and I, I can appreciate that. But I also appreciate solving, solving the problem, right? With very direct and simple and keep it simple and then go from there. Why, why does it have to solve problems that don't exist yet? Or why are we trying to do that as a board? I don't understand or as a community. I really don't understand that and I'm not being facetious. This is like, you know, I, I want to feel like we work together and not like I'm against any of you here. And that's what it feels like. And I don't think it should ever feel like that.
What are the problems?
What are the problems that you?
When you're reducing any laws.
What are the problems that you think are being addressed that don't exist?
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, Dave. What I asked was what are the problems that you think are being addressed that don't exist?
The lottery, I think, is, is, is a, is going to cause a lot of problems.
Okay, so, so just to go to the lottery.
But just one, I mean, that's.
Okay, no, let's go to the lottery. Let's go to that one. When am I going to go through every one of these?
No, of course, yeah.
But the lottery, one thing is like, well, how do you do this fair? If you're going to limit it to 50, 100, or whatever the number is, and how do you, how do you equitably do that without a lottery? Because if we say that there's 50 and there's 60 short-term rentals right now or 60 people apply, how, do you say first come, first served? How, how would you do it? Because we couldn't come up with that other way, a lottery, because if you say first come, first serve, how does that work? You know, it's like, is that, when it comes through the mail slot, is it, do you line up out front and come in or? And so the lottery is as much chance as who's going to be here first. So if you can, that, that's one thing that, you know, we thought was a fair way, you know, for, for everyone to have a chance to become a short-term rental.
If you're asking that question, I think the answer to that is that you allow the people who have, who have put equity into their business.
Business, key word.
Well, it is a business, okay? We're all in business in one way or another. Okay? The only, you know, look, in terms of people coming in your neighborhood, you know, people, you know, a mother-in-law comes here and there, that's the same sort of thing. These are strange people.
Coming, five days a week, your point is moot. It doesn't make any sense.
Let me stick, let me stick, let me stick to the point. What you do is you allow the people who have put equity into and worked hard, very hard. You don't just open your doors and start this. I mean, there seems to be somewhat of a stigma about this, I feel, but maybe I'm wrong. You let the people who have been doing this continue by, by, by signing up for a permit and whatever that number is, it is, okay? It's not 100 people in this village. It's more like, I don't know, 30, 35, maybe it is around 34 or 35. Let them do, let them permit those people.
So, so John, what you're basically saying is we're supposed to allow the people who've been breaking the law to get first.
First of all, I disagree with that characterization. I don't, first of all, I don't think the old law is applicable to the modern STR. So we're not going to get anywhere arguing over that. What I'm saying is, if you're going to look forward, look forward. Don't look back.
But we have to live what we have until we change it.
So, well, maybe you do.
But we don't want to look too forward because then we're overstepping our bounds.
That law is defunct, okay? That law is defunct. It has not been enforced. It's not, people have been violating that law, okay, openly and notoriously, if you, if you want to say it, for years. I would also add, I think that there is an interpretation problem that I don't even think that law applies. And I think you have to ask yourself, why?
I think we should end this discussion, that part of the discussion totally.
I'm, I'm trying.
Let's just end that part of the discussion because it doesn't matter to anything.
Because I'm trying to look forward and I was told to look back, okay? Looking forward, I think the, the, the answer to that is, is you allow the people who are in business now or in these, in this STR business now to be permitted and to make sure they're within the, the health, safety and welfare codes that you want to enforce and let them carry on for whatever, you know, a year or so. And do that, all right? And, and then perhaps open up more numbers if all goes well, all right? Not put artificial limits on their, on the number of nights they can rent out their place. You know, it's almost like saying to the wine shop, you can only sell 60 bottles per week because you're promoting alcoholism.
As a business that's regulated and that they have permits for and that are, are working with, with government or state laws.
I'm talking about regulation. I'm, I'm talking about how to permit and it's a regulation. That's what I'm talking about, Dave. All right? It's a regulation.
We're talking about a business in a residential area.
And we all pay our taxes and we pay our taxes on the money we make on these STRs. We're paying taxes.
That doesn't mean that we should allow more and more of them or that we shouldn't regulate them because you're giving us some.
It doesn't lessen the legitimacy of that operation is what I'm saying, David. And it seems to me that the board has painted these businesses in that light, okay? For a number of reasons. So looking forward, that's, that's my suggestion. And to sit down with those people who are, who are operating those and to work out rational laws and rational rules for running them going forward. That's.
I guess this word is irrational.
That's all I've ever said. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that, Dave. I'm sorry, okay? I didn't mean, I didn't say that the entire code was irrational. I'm not saying that.
Just this one because not getting on.
I'm saying what, how would you go forward? That's, I'm giving you my suggestion. You can tell me I'm full of you know what or whatever, but that's what I'm telling you. I think that, that's a very rational way to go forward.
Okay.
Is asking for financials still in the, what you have as well?
What's that?
Asking for financials is still in there?
Asking for number of nights rented. Please ask, I think you're asking the verification that's still in the law or the number of days? No financials. We don't care.
Just nights.
No, but the only way you're going to know how many nights is that, is that, whether, is that that disclosure is mandated. So it's mandated and it, and the only way you can, when you give it to someone, then you're subject to a fine. And that therein, I think, lies a big problem with that. And it also, it, it will also, I think, possibly promote surreptitious behavior.
What does that, what do you mean by that?
Well, people are going to be reluctant to cough up their confidential information. And quite frankly, there's a big student in New York City right now between Airbnb and the city about that very point, about the ability or the, the municipality's ability to mandate the disclosure of that information. And the city, so far as I understand it, has lost. It's gone to the Second Circuit, to the Court of Appeals. I have one of the. So that, I object to that. I object to having to be under that onus of giving that information.
We're approaching the two-hour mark.
Yes.
I just had a quick question. Did you keep the, I'm having a hard time finding the changes. We tried to follow the meetings, but it was very hard because, you know, page six, this line.
And different documents.
So did, did it stay in there that a building owned by an LLC is not allowed to apply for an SRT permit?
That is correct.
And that is based on, I'm just asking and I'm not going to argue with it. I'm wondering what the, what the justice is for that decision. I won't comment, I just.
I think the reasoning was, was that we don't want people investing in properties